Good afternoon, everyone. The joint meeting of the Sacramento City Council and the Housing Authority will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Tao.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Vice Mayor Maples.
Here.
Councilmember Gueda.
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
We expect Mayor Protem Telemontes momentarily. And Mayor Stammer.
I am here. Councilmember Kaplan, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance?
All sand is table. Please rise for the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanon people, the Southern Maidu, the Valley and Plains Miwok, the Putwin-Win Toom people, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. Remain standing. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan. This afternoon's meeting again is a joint meeting of the Housing Authority and the City Council, which the City Council sits as the Housing Authority, and we have some pure city items and some Housing Authority items. So we're going to begin with the consent calendar. Are there questions or comments on the consent calendar that any member wants to take up? Councilmember Valenzuela?
I just have a comment on item nine.
And Mayor, for the record, two council offices ask us to continue item eight, so we'd like to continue that one to the 30th of April.
Okay. That's fine. Was there anybody else up on the queue? I'm sorry.
No, that was just.
Okay. Very good. So is there public testimony on the consent calendar?
I have two speakers, Lambert Davis and McWorthy.
Yes, I came down to comment on number four. As I have stated many times to this rostrum, the mayor, City Council, people like Mr. Worthy and myself were vindicated today. I studied number four. Whoever put that together, that was outstanding. I hope it was Minty Cuppy. She's been wonderful in this chamber during the pandemic. Had she not been here during the pandemic, I probably wouldn't be saying what I'm saying. I must see integrity. Now, in this report, it talks about the charter. Mr. Worthy's been talking about the charter for years. I had no idea how valuable that is. It's very valuable to the operation and the power of the city manager's office. That's why I voted for a strong mayor, because I wanted to rein that in. And that's why I believe the city is in the deficit it's in, because we don't see transparency in that area. For instance, in this report, and maybe I read it wrong, but it's almost as though the Brown Act can be trumped, depending on how you want to do it. That should never happen. The Brown Act should not be violated. Also, I believe senior citizens' freedom of speech has been eliminated because they can't come to the chamber. All you have to do is reinstate the call-in, and Minty does a good job to cut people off that go too far. But for senior citizens, they have been eliminated from freedom of speech at City Hall. And as a native, and I'll end by saying I want to thank Mr. Jennings for ending.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is McWorthy.
Good afternoon. You'll see on my speaker slip, I oppose this because it should have been in front of the public other than here to what you're amending. When you amend the Constitution, you amend this here, and somebody here is continuing line amendment. What did you amend? Where is the printout that you put in here? You don't have that printout for us. Those things should have been. But anyway, we'll keep looking, and I'm going to keep here of freedom of speech. I know my rights have been violated here, but it's all right. Goes back to the consent calendar. I told you the last time, and it showed the proof right here. You approved the rules before you got here in the back room. That was approved before you got here. You couldn't set up an amendment unless you agreed to approve something as an amendment. So opened up to the general public, and there were no more of what I'm talking about. Instead of that, you're making your own rules as though the same thing came up on the replacement of the City Council. The mayor made his own rules. Those people didn't know what you were saying over there. But that was the power of not having this under the scope of civil rights. Were this violation of people's civil rights to go in and take over a neighborhood, and we can hypothetically, we have something about while the fallout was over there. It going to come, and I'm going to speak to it right here because I'm going to watch it.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers on the consent calendar.
Okay, thank you. I have Councilmember Gueda and Councilmember Maples.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just move the consent calendar with the continuance of item number eight to the April 30th meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Valenzuela, sorry. I had Councilmember Valenzuela, I'm sorry, then Councilmember Maples. Go ahead.
Oh, it's okay. Just briefly on item nine, wanted to just take a moment to applaud our city teams. We had a new business open in our district at a vacant Rite Aid on the corner of S and 21st, Love Laundry, who, when the storm started, said, hey, wait a minute, this water is backing up into our facility, we need help. And I'm pretty sure DOU staff was out there within a day, and now is bringing forward this item to help fund some necessary sewer improvements so that that stops happening. And so I just wanted to take a brief moment just to applaud the city staff for moving so quickly on item nine and how grateful I am to see it here, and I know the owner of Love Laundry is as well. So thank you again.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Maple.
Thank you. And also, really excited about that as well. Every time I drive by, I'm so glad to see a business in there. It looks great. I have comments on item number seven. I just really want to say this is the budgetary judgments for the 21st Avenue beautification in my district. This is a wonderful, wonderful project, beautiful art cleanups. It's a really large investment into one of the highest need communities in my district and in the city. And I think when we talk about equity in terms of our spending, this is a perfect example of that, of us really prioritizing these neighborhoods. And just really wanted to give a shout out to the Franklin Boulevard Partnership, Ethel Phillips Elementary, the City of Sacramento Public Works Department, of course, the Department of Arts and Culture, and then all the stakeholders for that. It's really an example of teamwork, and it's provided already a wonderful amenity to the community. So thank you.
Second, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right. The consent calendar has been moved and seconded. Item eight has been continued to April the 30th. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. We're going to, without objection, take item 12 before item 11 on the public hearing agenda. So let's hear room item 12 first, please. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of council. My name is Whitney Hinton, Program Manager with Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency. Staff is seeking approval of bond issuance to conduct a Tax Equity Physical Responsibility Act or TEFRA hearing and approval of a $2 million loan commitment for River City Apartments. River City Apartments, a new construction project on approximately one acre vacant lot at the corner of 69th Street and Folsom Boulevard. This will be a five-story building with 66 units consisting of one, twos, and three bedrooms, serving residents incoming rates from 30% to 70% of area median income. There will be 18 parking spaces onsite for residents. However, the project is located near bus and light rail. The property amenities includes a community room, barbecue area, a school age play structure, and a half basketball court. This project is unique as it will be a permanent home to 15 individuals with developmental disabilities who are homeless and at risk of homelessness. Chelsea Investment Corporation is the development team on this project. They have successfully developed over 100 low-income housing projects. Property management will be provided by Con-Am Management Corporation, who is pending approval by the agency. Con-Am currently manages five properties in the Sacramento area and specializes in affordable housing. Resident services will be provided by Pacific Southwest Community Development Corporation. They will offer 15 hours of, 15 hours per week of onsite resident services, not limited to 10 hours of after-school programming. Supportive services will be administered by Alta California Regional Center, a nonprofit organization who support individuals with developmental disabilities, including diagnosis of intellectual disability, epilepsy, autism, and other handicapping conditions. Their services will be available to 15 individuals for a minimum of 15 hours per week, but they can provide more support if an individual requires additional services. They offer a range of service and support that include individualized personal, individualized person-centered planning, service coordination, employment training, supported and independent living, ongoing housing support, and transportation services, to name a few. In addition, Department of Developmental Services approved $1.5 million loan to Alta California Regional Center for the support of this project. Other funding includes bonds and tax credits, a conventional loan, and a deferred developer fee. In closing, staff is requesting approval to issue mortgage revenue bonds and provide a loan commitment of $2 million of the River City Apartments project, and staff is here to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember, were you up on this one?
Yes.
You were. Go ahead. Do we have, I'm sorry, do we have public testimony?
Mayor, I have two speakers on this item. So Peter Mendoza and McWorthy.
Is that Mr. Mendoza? Hi.
Would you like a handheld mic?
Good to see you, Mr. Mayor.
Good to see you, Mr. Mendoza. Take.
Is that mic, or should I just use the mic over here?
We have a handheld mic.
Whatever you want.
She'll bring it over to you. And if we come over to the middle, we can see you.
Okay. Thank you all.
Here you go.
That might be easier. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, it's okay. I can hold up for your TV.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the Council and Housing Authority, for the record, my name is Peter Mendoza, and I work for the State Council on Developmental Disabilities. I'm a community program specialist for Sacramento Regional Office. The State Council on Developmental Disabilities has 12 offices throughout the state with state and federal responsibility, in brief, to make sure that people with intellectual and developmental disabilities and other people with disabilities and their families have systems and supports that allow folks to be able to have self-determination, live independently or as independent as possible with supports, the right to self-determination, the right to live, work, and play in our communities, just like those without disabilities. The River City Project is really important to us. As you are probably aware, 70% of the people with intellectual and developmental disabilities who can live on their own have difficulty because of the lack of accessible affordable housing. The disability community is hit really hard by this barrier. So people who are not able to find housing often have to live in segregated settings or with their families, and they aren't able to achieve many of the things that people achieve without disabilities. This project is also close to light rail, public transit, and of course, a very wonderful educational institution. So the folks that live here will have the opportunity to take advantage of many of the services and amenities in this beautiful city. So we look forward to this project passing for funding and the project opening soon. Thank you all for the honor to speak today. I wish you all well, but thank you for your service.
So much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is McWorthy.
We see again, bonds. We can't make it off bonds, people. Now, who going to be the owner of this project? What would be the income of this project to pay off those bonds? Bonds have a tail to them. Somebody got to pay some interest on this bond. But anyway, we see this is the unoccurring wealth, second welfare in the state of California, housing authorities. Now, your house ain't got nothing to do with your baby going to school. Your house ain't got nothing to do with that. Yes, the disabled, go to Elgro and look at your apartments over there. Been violation of disabled for years. Nobody said a word but me. Wake up, people. You can't keep bonding and putting education sweet words in here, the handicap, we do this, the light rail, the right rail is a disaster. You can't even go across town unless you got a whole day to spend. You can't even get to the airport on light rail, but yet still, the government subsidizes. We're going to be asking the government on central states, pull some of that money. Pull some of that money away from them and let them bite the deer on their own. Because California, since we've become a central state, you see change of this to change of that. Now, if you change that, who is collecting the money? You ain't making no jobs. So where's the money going? I didn't know when the city did, you would take our social security. My father was here as a street policeman. No social security taken out. Where was that money going? You talk about labor, the government and the state, the government and free enterprise got two different wage levels. Nobody want to talk about it. Why? Because they do what they want with the money and spend it the way they want to spend it, and nobody said a word but the McWorthy and the cheesecake man. Where's the education of the other folks here, and especially people of me? Not African-American, I'm an American Negro. Wake up, people.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank all the partners here involved in this project. This is a, an amazing project, and one of the, one of the things that it reminds me of where this is at and the location where it's at, I used to walk through this area, which was a vacant lot next to the railroad tracks, to try to get to Sac State and to see that the fruition of what was the University Transit Village Plan that was developed back shortly after your time on the council, you know, Mayor. I think Councilmember Dave Jones at the time had just taken over, but Councilmember Steve Cohen was still there. And LaShelle, and Christine, and Celia were all involved in that part when we had the 65th Street Rack, and I got a chance to sit on the 65th Street Rack. And the whole purpose was to revitalize that whole area that was very industrial. Most of it was warehousing and also a unsafe place to walk through or get to. And to see this area, this location, be a place for affordable housing and for those students or those individuals with developmental disabilities, and to be close to, as was mentioned by Mr. Mendoza, to a wonderful university, Sacramento State, you know. And there are so many, you know, fellow Hornets who could have benefited from a location like this that met the income requirements. And I think what's important here is this is not only a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, but three-bedroom options, which means that are families, families that are struggling, many of them who could be at Sac State, and many of the individuals who have developmental disabilities who also are, could be students at Sac State. And I'm very proud of the, you know, Division of Student Affairs, their Developmental Disabilities Access Center that they have at Sac State. And so I think this, the, this project here is, is great. The only thing that I would ask, and this, I'll make this part of the motion, to open and close a public hearing and move the item, but also include direction to SHRA to work with the applicants so that, there's such a long line for these spaces, that they first start with Sac State, with their Disability Access Center and their Division of Housing there, so that it's so close to the campus, and there's so many families there and individuals who also are coming out of the foster care system, who find themselves in these income requirements, that we look at the outreach there so that the true vision of the 65th Transit Village area, you know, be met by the folks that are, that are there. And now, we can't require that everybody be a student or be with the university, but we can definitely do the early outreach so that we meet those co-equal goals. And what a great location next to light rail, a grocery store, all of the services and amenities, and most importantly, you know, next to, right down the street, also one of the, the largest nursing schools and nursing facilities that are providing these resources for so many of our families. So great project. I'm excited about it. And with that, Mr. Open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Very good. Thank you. I just agree with everything you just said. You know, bravo, this is really great. I want to focus a little bit on the 15 units reserved for the ACRC residents. Just the need for supportive housing for people with developmental disabilities is, it's one of the real needs in our state, especially as we've done the right thing by shutting, again, most of the state hospitals, the institutions, and enabling people with more ability than disability to be able to live independently and with dignity in our communities. Is this, have we done this more than once with development, with people with developmental disabilities?
Maybe I could answer that.
Yeah.
Mayor Christine Weiger from SHRA. You know what? This is the first project that I can recall that we partnered with, with, there was units that were, you know, restricted specifically developmentally disabled. Chelsea and Alex here from Chelsea Investment brought this idea to us, and we thought, what a great idea. I do think we have a few of those units in Mirasol, now that I'm thinking about it and I'm talking. There are a few units with Mirasol Village, too. But so, we have done it, but not often. But it's great.
Hope it's a precedent. Good. All right. Excellent. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. That measure passes unanimously. Now, let's move to, back to item 11, which is the TEFRA hearing for 440 Arden Way.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Whitney Hinton again from SHRA. Staff is conducting a Tax Equity and Physical Responsibility Act or TEFRA hearing for the issuance of tax-dent bonds by California Municipal Finance Authority, or CMFA, for the 440 Arden Way Apartments. The project sits on 1.07 acre lot located at Arden Way and Del Paso Boulevard. It entails a single five-story building featuring 124 affordable ones, twos, and three-bedroom units ranging from 25 to 60% area median income. There are 31 project-based vouchers that the agency awarded to formerly homeless individuals in September of last year. Onsite amenities includes community space, a courtyard, picnic area, lounge area, playground equipment, garden plots, bike storage, and 54 covered parking spaces. Construction operating budgets have been reviewed and approved by SHRA. However, the project will not be monitored by SHRA as we are not the issuer. The developer is Bridge Housing, a mission-driven nonprofit operating since 1983 with experience in affordable housing initiatives. This is their second project in Sacramento County. Bridge Property Management will be the property manager, and they, property management company for the project, and they are allocated considerably, and they allocate considerably, considerably operating cost to fund the 24-hour desk coverage for the residents. Lutheran Social Services of Northern California will deliver comprehensive resident services. SHRA has reviewed LSS Resident Services Plan, which will offer 60 hours of adult education workshops, community building activities, and after-school programming for the residents. LSS will provide case management services with the support of two full-time caseworkers aimed to providing targeted services for the 31 permanent supportive housing residents. The project is funded with the permanent loan, tax credits, affordable housing, and sustainable communities funding, HCD local government matching grant, deferred developer fee, and a pre-development HAP grant from the City of Sacramento. Additionally, the land was previously owned by the City of Sacramento and the State of California. A property acquisition agreement was executed in December 2023, was transferred to city-owned parcels to the state for incorporation into the development site. All parcels within the site will be under a one ground lease between the developer and the state. Due to time constraints set by Housing and Community Development or HCD, CMFA will be the bond issuer. At the Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Commission last Wednesday, two of the commissioners voted no on this project as SHRA is not the bond issuer and will not have long-term monitoring or legal oversight of this project. In closing, staff is requesting to approve, the approval to conduct a TEFRA hearing, and staff is available to answer any questions you have for the public hearing on the bonds.
Very good. Do we have public testimony before I turn it over to the district? Councilmember, for his first remarks.
So I do have one speaker on item 11, McWorthy.
I can't say enough about bonds, because bonds are dangerous. You ain't saying who buy those bonds, do you? Tell them who buy those bonds. The biggest bonds is not bought by Americans, it's out of the country, buy those bonds. Check it out. Now, when we talk about at-do's education, why don't you tell the at-do's something about equity in their property? How to utilize that equity, parlaying that equity together for enough to build that project? But you didn't go there, because you spend on nonprofit, and who gets the job? How many real jobs going to be there? On both the project, how many real jobs going to be there? You're going to go there, and you're going to educate? See, that's the brainwash you got set up. That's what went on in the Sixty Movements. Change your nationality, and we will bridge the gap between you and black white. That's a damn lie, and you know it's a lie. Nice showing everywhere. Where are the people that experienced that with me? You brought them out of their debt. Where the sociology? What can you teach of sociology? Political science? Where's your county in political science? You don't find it, people. Educate this city, and you will see a change. When you educate them and know how to let them use that equity instead of race equity, use the equity in your property. Free enterprise is the most, greatest thing you will ever see on this earth. That gives you an opportunity, but you look at what's in the city. We don't give no more bidding on, on projects. We know that's a friend, we're going to give them that bid. That's the reason you got sued, the bank, America got sued, because you was using taxpayers' money and not giving them any money out of that pot that the taxpayers put the money in. You're going right back to that thing, right back. People, wake up. Teach the community. Go out and tell them the truth. Ask the question. I'll be there.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Thank you. I know Yaiyan from the city team. Wanted to make a couple of comments, please, and we'll turn it over to the council.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Members of the City Council, Yaiyan Ile, City Housing Manager. I just wanted to come up here to say how happy and excited we are to bring this project forward to you today and say a few words and introduce the developer to make a few comments to council. I mostly wanted to acknowledge all of the hard work that has gone into place by various city departments as we have worked through this project to bring it to where it is today. As Whitney indicated, we, the city contributed parcels, which involved our real estate department. We demolished the city building at the site, so our facilities management department was involved in helping with that. Our HAP 2 funding, which we recently talked about, HAP 5, so this is an example of a project that we have funded with HAP funds towards housing, and it also included a small amount of ARPA funding. And so we wanted to acknowledge that, which was approved by council back in October of 2022. And also, the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Grant that the city partnered with the developer on will include design and construction for the Dixie Anne Clean and Green Alleyway Improvements, as well as design and construction of Wood Lake Park Accessible Walkway and lighting improvement projects, which we are looking forward to working with our Public Works Department on implementing. At this time, I'd like to introduce John McCall, the Associate, the Associate Director for Development with Bridge Housing, to say a few words if that's okay.
Please.
Thank you, Yaiyan. Thank you as well, Whitney, for the chance to speak, and thank you, Mayor, and council members. So as, as Yaiyan said, my name is John McCall. I'm an Associate Director of Development with Bridge Housing Corporation. We are a nonprofit based out of San Francisco, but we've been building affordable housing across the state for 41 years. So as as Yaoyan said, my name is John McCall. I'm an associate director of development with Bridge Housing Corporation. We are a nonprofit based out of San Francisco, but we have been building affordable housing across the state for 41 years, and we're thrilled that this project is about two months away from being able to start on construction. Once it's complete, the development will transform what is right now a vacant state-owned armory building and a fenced-in parking lot that surrounds it into 124 brand-new apartments affordable to low-income families, as well as onsite supportive services, as Whitney mentioned, and a community-serving childcare center. And it couldn't be located on a more underutilized site. So it is immediately adjacent to a light rail station and a bus transfer station. It's surrounded on three sides by parks, and it is walking distance to grocery stores, restaurants, and schools in Wood Lake and the surrounding Del Paso neighborhood. The project is only possible thanks to the support and leadership of this council and the hard work of the staffs of SHRA and the city. As mentioned, the city council authorized the transfer of a city-owned piece of land to be incorporated into the site. That is what allowed us to add 20 additional affordable apartments to the development here, as well as that first-floor community childcare center. That is going to be available to not just our residents, but residents of the surrounding community. The $3.7 million HAP grant that the city granted the project, along with the project-based vouchers from SHRA, are why we're now able to offer 31 units to formerly homeless families and individuals. 11 of those are two- and three-bedroom units, so for homeless families to move into the property. And then, as Yaoyan mentioned, this council approved us to coapply for the Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities Program that's not only provided the critical gap financing we need to build the housing, but also to invest in bicycle, pedestrian, and transit infrastructure in the neighborhood. And your vote today gives you the chance to grant a final approval and to open our doors, hopefully in early 2026, to 124 households that need the housing. So we're here to answer any questions you have, but I again just want to thank this council for your leadership and your support and for SHRA and the city staff for everything they've done to get us to this milestone. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your persistence as well. Let me turn it over to the council member. Councilmember Tao.
Yes. First off, I would like to thank staff and Bridge Housing for working on this project and my district. You know, this community, my community, needs a lot of more housing on the De Paso Boulevard, and this is one of the the second project, I believe, that will be coming to De Paso Boulevard. You know, but this development is particularly special because it's going to be in the Wood Lake neighborhood. And, you know, we we need more housing in our district and the city of Sacramento, and I really appreciate staff and Bridge Housing for bringing together this amazing plan for our area. One thing I would like to encourage is, you know, priority outreach to low-income families in in our neighborhoods, you know, the 958315, 95838. Definitely, we have a lot of residents in our area that need housing, and I would, you know, just would like to encourage Bridge Housing and who's monitoring the property to definitely prioritize outreach to our neighborhood because definitely we housing is a big issue in our district, and we would love to work with, you know, you all to definitely reach out and find potential renters and for the area. And so with that, I would like to motion to pass the item.
And council member, does that include opening and closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor, and I think it's already been seconded, so I'll third it. It's fine. It's fine. I'll just give my third to it. You know, you had me when you said affordable housing, homeless, homeless families, 124 who will be able to move into housing next to a light rail station, which provides transit-oriented development. So not only are you providing housing, but you're providing transportation for those to be able to get to the jobs that they need in order to keep the housing. So you just had me from that point on, and I just think this is a great project. I'm really proud of my council member Tao for talking about it on the news the other day and the opportunity to be able to vote on this and move it forward in the district that highly needs it. So I will be supporting this and looking forward to seeing it come to Sacramento and to the north side of Sacramento, which is a high-needs area. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vice Mayor Maple.
Thank you, Mayor. Echo all of the comments of my colleagues, but also just want to note that it's proximity to King Kong Brewery, which has some amazing pizza and beer. So I just want to say, of all the wonderful amenities, including its access to transit and also to a wonderful Wood Lake Park, Wood Lake neighborhood, some really great businesses along Del Paso Boulevard that they can also frequent. But I did have a question, and this is a more general question. I think this is a really innovative project that we're looking at combining, you know, land from from different jurisdictions, taking an old use, I think you said an armory building, which, you know, we know that there's a few of those. So does does that SHRA frequently kind of look at the lists of, you know, vacant land owned by like the state, the county, and other districts? Like, for example, the air district or the sanitation district and see if there's opportunities for this kind of collaboration? Because I think it's a great idea, and we know that in in Sacramento, there's a lot of different jurisdictional boundaries in terms of land ownership.
Yeah, Count Vice Mayor. We do try to do that. We try to work with our partners to look at land and advertise it. I know the city has some land right now that they're exploring as well. In fact, the next item on your agenda is land that SHRA owns, but it absolutely is it's one of the key things to making sure you can cite affordable housing easily, to have the land available. So definitely, we try to partner with anyone that has land and is happy to issue requests for proposals, find of qualified developers, all of that. So yes.
Thank you so much.
Before we vote, I just want to ask, are we ready for the traditional intensive questioning of the new council member? See? That was a tradition that never that never really was a tradition, but I was trying to. I know, that's what I was thinking. But congratulations. This is, I mean, I know you're new, but it is delivering for the district in a very in a very, very significant way. And and thank you to SHRA and the city and the developer. I do take some pride in the AHSC funding. That's keeps gift that keeps on giving, so thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, oppose, abstain. It's unanimous. Very good. We do have one more item, and that is item 13.
Hi, everyone. Whitney Hinton again with SHRA. Staff is requesting approval of bond issuance for the Donner Field Senior Project. In 1987, SHRA took ownership of the one-acre property located at 4501 Ninth Avenue. In August of 2020, SHRA issued a request for proposal seeking a developer to construct and manage new affordable housing. Eden Housing was selected to build senior apartments. In June of last year, SHRA executed a conditional loan commitment in the amount of $10,085,000, which consisted of $7 million in SHRA federal funds and 2.66 million in Mental Health Service Act or MHSA funds and 1.25 million in city general funds plus a seller carryback loan from SHRA. Additionally, last fall, their application for 9% tax credits was unsuccessful. The project has now transitioned to utilize utilize bonds and tax credits. The Donner Field project is a new construction project servicing senior individuals aged 55 and older at or below 50% of area median income. The property primarily comprised of one bedrooms, totaling 67 units altogether. 17 of the units will be reserved for with project-based voucher for the MHSA clients. The project will feature various amenities such as a computer room, multipurpose room with shared kitchen, barbecue area, bocce ball court, and community garden. Eden Housing is both the developer and property manager. Furthermore, it's important to note the prevailing wages will be applied to construction on this project. 15 hours of onsite resident services will be offered by Eden Housing Resident Service Incorporated. Classes will be will include, but not limited to, nutrition, ESL classes, bingo, gardening, and counseling. Sacramento County Development of Health Services or DHS will provide one full-time case manager who will be responsible for the supportive services of the 17 MHSA residents. In closing, staffers requesting approval of the issuance of a bond up to $30 million for the funding of Donner Field Senior Project, and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Do we have testimony on this one?
I have no speakers on this item.
Okay, thank you. Then let's turn it over to the members. Vice Mayor, your district.
Thank you.
Mayor, yes, this is an exciting project. I think we needed more senior housing in all of our communities, but certainly in that area as well. So I'm really thrilled to be supporting this today. I did have one quick question that came from some constituents that live across the street, and I actually live on this street, too, but just a little bit further down the other direction. But so the field that is currently being used by the school, by the students for, as like, I believe, a track, has there been any requests from the school to have some portion to be able to have students recreate? Is it a big issue for them or they, you know, how have those conversations gone?
So, yeah, the school is using it right. That is the site where the affordable housing will be built, right where that track is right now. The school, we've had a lease with them for, oh, I know, I don't know, 10 years, maybe a very long time, because why why leave it vacant when they can be utilized? But they are, they've always understood that it was a temporary lease and that at some point affordable housing will be built there. So we are in pretty regular conversations with them about it, and they understand and they will have, of course, they do have a play area on their own grounds. But yeah, it will be moved to affordable housing rather than the track in the future.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful. And I know that, you know, you said a bocce ball court, so I'm just trying to, I'm sure you've already thought through a lot of these things, but, you know, if there is any way to maybe partner or think about the way of structuring the design so that there might be, so it's not as much of a loss for the students, that'd be great. But I do understand the limitations. And also just want to note for my colleagues that this piece of land has been owned by SHRA since 1985. So pretty exciting to see it to be developed into housing. So thank you for your leadership on this, and I'll be opening and closing the public hearing and moving the item.
Second, Councilmember Gueda.
Thank you very much. You know, first, you know, thank you, Count, my colleague, Vice Mayor Maple, for, you know, getting this to that next step as well. And also, I wanted to personally also thank SHRA and our former council member, Jay Shanier. This is a effort that happened, I think, what, 2016 or 2015, when we were looking at all of the vacant lots that we have in our city and the vacant lot program. And some of the results of that we've had are from that assessment and trying to get rid of all those vacant lots. I know Habitat has taken some of those. We've done those in the south area. We have the Ninth and Tenth Avenue next to Colonial, the Colonial Theater. That's what prompted Donner Field here to really think through how we can revitalize Stockton Boulevard. So Donner Field, while you can't see it when you're driving down Stockton Boulevard, is part of that Stockton Boulevard revitalizing revitalization effort. Donner Field, the Ninth and Tenth Avenue, San Juan Motel, and the Mercy Housing Project are all part of this effort to do almost 700 units in its total when we're done. So this is a great piece because the other pieces, if you look at Mercy Housing right now, that's there, it's permanent supportive housing. The Mercy Housing Project that's that's opening up soon will be workforce housing. The the San Juan site will be affordable housing with extremely low income, higher number. But this one will add to that mix, which will be senior housing. So we'll have a combination of market rate and also different income levels throughout the Boulevard. And that's an important piece because when we've got the the Stockton Boulevard plan that's out for review, all of these pieces are coming together. So exciting to say that. There's a there's a lot of time gone into it. I know that I think there's another item that we'll discuss at a different time, but there are still a number of ROSA properties, I think in District 2, that are that we need to look at, and I'd like to see how we can continue to find all those different lots so that we can continue to move forward for the properties that the city and SHRA own. So a lot of congratulations, but excited that actually this one's moving forward. And I, too, live near that area and excited to see all the amenities and maybe play some bocce ball with some of the neighbors there. So glad to second Mr. Mayor.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Great work on all three projects. Good presentations. Thank you. And it's a good day when we're able to prove this many units of affordable housing. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, oppose, abstain. That passes. So that concludes the formal agenda. Are there, is there public testimony on items not on the agenda? Madam clerk, we have three people, I understand it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have three speakers on items not on the agenda. Kai M. On, Crystal Bailey, and then McWorthy.
Is Kai here?
I don't see movement. Crystal Bailey, and then McWorthy.
Welcome.
Hi. I speak. I stay at the Rose Road First Step Bridge to Homeless Program, and we have a lot of things going on there that needs to be fixed. There's no P G N E at all. Those little homes are very, very cold at night. When it's like 30 degrees outside, there's like 15 inside those things. On walking down that street at nighttime on Rose Road is very, very dangerous. There is a back gate that leads from the Rose Road Light Rail Station to the homeless program, and I don't see why that gate cannot be opened up for safety reasons. There that there we have people there in walkers that cannot walk down that road at nighttime because it is not even ADA paved right for them, and that's a big problem, too. And really, you want to know, when is the heat coming? We keep hearing Monday or next month, next week. I just got there, but, you know, I would like to know when the heat's coming. It's very, very cold still.
I know that the city manager and his team are working very closely with S M U D on on these issues. I don't have a timeline for you, but I know that it is a matter of...
All the other homes have program, all the other programs have heat. Other pallet homes have heat to their pallets, so why aren't Rose Road has their heat yet?
Maybe we can get back to you with a with a bit of more of a, at least as specific a timeline as possible.
And I do have contact information I can provide in the city manager's office.
Okay. What about getting that back gate open at the light rail station for us to come in and out of it? It's a very safety hazard, and I've been told already, somebody's been hit twice already walking down that road. So it's playing froggy at nighttime trying to get to that gate. People do not slow down on that road for us. It's a very, very safety issue.
Let us get back to you on that question as well, okay?
Okay.
Thank you for coming. We'll get back.
I shall return if we have no more heat the next meeting.
Okay.
McWorthy is our final speaker on matters not on the agenda.
Some people realize why I can say the things I say about how. Now, I spoke to what you are speaking to now in 1981. Why are you still at this level? Why haven't you moved to better ways of doing things, huh? You, you, you're going over the old shit, been there for years. I left South Carolina, refused to be in the Sixty Movement because I'm not going to get hit by somebody put a dog on me because I would shoot you, no ifs and but. Now, what we see here now that you're doing, you're still at bonds, low-income housing. What have you gained? Nothing. You're doing the same thing over and over. Now we look at the hearing as two hearings. This is not a hearing. It's two hear, a formal and informal hearing. A formal hearing, I can subpoena my people and I can question you. See, what you're doing to the people? You're lying to the folks. Now, when we talk about the people, nonprofit, when they get you to pass it, they leave, don't they? They don't do nothing else. Then you come along and say, well, oh, we're going to do this and do that for you. Those are the people got a check. Why do you give them a check and they can't speak here and sit here and speak to anything else? When we look at the young man who was adopted over there, what you put on the city council, you can't move the deposit, baby. You can't. So don't sit there. You're going to be lied to. Something else is going to come up. Something else is going to come up, and I want you to hear it. The way that the mayor said, those people have a contract, y'all already had a contract with the city. These people here already have a contract with the city and everything approved. Wake up the public and let them know you're lying through your nose.
Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Are there city council ideas and or questions? I seeing none. We have a closed session at 4:00 and then a council meeting at 5:00. Until then, I'm sorry, we are we are adjourned.